In fact, it's called seven o'clock and this meeting is now open. Just a couple of things I want to go over before we actually go to the public session. First one is, let's welcome Camilla Smith. Next one is on the agenda, appointing the presentation for best dressed window. The lady didn't want to attend the meeting, so I've actually made the presentation to her already. So we'll just get past that.
Thanks for that. The last two or three meetings have been your honour. You've lectured the public, I know they should come up with a solution. So I think it's now you should lecture the councils on how they should come up with their solutions. Possibly about what was off in a meeting in itself is not a defence. But to actually mislead people about what actually went off and who said what, to the point where a member of the public was verbally attacked and in public. As being the demands made on him to give my telephone number to this person. It was said that I'd wrote up this person's name in the meeting and in actual fact, the council wrote the name in the meeting. So I think it was lecture your councils on how they come up with a solution and how they come up with the business.
Well, first of all, I am not here to lecture councillors the rest of the process. And if anyone has any problems with any individual councillors, look on the website and make the appropriate complaints to the Standards Board.
What I'm going to do is let the place have the councillors, how they should come up with a solution. You've got several of those principles, you've got to tell the public on how they should, what they should do, what they should know, that they should sit down and use standing room and all this. So tell your councillors, it's not acceptable that they mislead people, that they actually lie about what was said in a council meeting and who said it. To a point where a member of the public gets their relief in public. And it's a direct consequence of the actions of a councillor on, either a councillor or another councillor, on this council. And I agree with you, so...
No, we're not, it's not a point for discussion. Basically, as I've said, there are the proper way to make complaints to our councillors. I will remind the councillors that you do have all the information as far as code of conduct, which does include the known principles. And we should adhere to those strictly. Right, we may move to the... Right, it's not a point for discussion. As I said, there are ways in which these issues are dealt with. Right, if I may go then into, I'm just going to get to my notes. The first item is, I'm going to go to public session and we have one question from the side.
I wondered if the councillor had any plans for the new year to increase their profile and perhaps make the meetings a bit friendlier for the public. The suggestions that I've got, if anyone's interested, are, one, I would encourage you to use microphones of some kind at the meetings. I think that's been badly needed for quite a while. I think we could also change the standing orders to allow people from outside the parish to join in and raise points at the meetings, provided those points are relevant to Dinnington. And I also wondered if you could look at other ways people can pose questions to the council without actually attending the meeting, if they can do it via email or via post or something like that, because obviously not everybody can get to the meeting. Some people may be disabled or they may have issues with childcare, things like that.
Okay, well, I can address a couple of those items first, which is, basically as far as microphones, we are doing some work on that, Clark is actually looking into it. It's very difficult for us because of the size of this, because obviously if the sound, especially audio recorded, we get echoes. That may not even be solved by microphones. It will solve the problem for the public hearing, although I'm pretty sure they can hear me. But some people have quite a voice tonight.
Yeah, some people are better at projecting than others, obviously.
Well, we are definitely looking into that one, so that's advice for councillors as well. We are actually looking into that. And the third item, the vision is already there and I do know that, I think councillor Jepson suggested in the past where you can actually post questions via email. That already exists. As far as trying to make us more prominent, I hope you'd agree that we are trying to do that more and more now via Facebook, Twitter and our own website. So, I mean, as far as those three, those two points, if there's anybody else that wants to come in on those first?
Well, the microphones, I agree. I think that we all meet in a theatre and I call for life to understand how it can be difficult to get microphones in a theatre. Anston council meets in a smaller place than this and actually has microphones. So for life to me, I have to understand what the difficulty is as far as Dinnington is concerned. Because I've sat where you're sat, quite peacefully, and I agree with you that we get much rings at this end of the table and we sat there and to clue what's been going on. We don't even know what we're talking about, we don't know what answers they've come up with because we can't hear it. I just find it ridiculous on that. I'll tell you another point, an outsider to speak, again, I find it ridiculous.
Wait a minute, he has to be invited to this meeting. Very specifically, I say, do you have any response on those first two points? Then I'm going to bring the second point.
There's so, email questions that, as chairman said, that it is possible to do that. But I'm a bit wary about the fact that we can get inundated with questions by email and we've got nobody there. You know, I can understand if we've got disabled people or whatever, they can do that. But it's a bit, we're getting stuff, I mean, I found out now, I'm getting stuff from Clark by email, asking me for an answer by email, not discussing it in this meeting, but asking, getting it by email. So I'm a bit concerned about that, because in that, I understand, we, as far as people can start getting it.
Yeah, I meant emailing questions in, which would then be discussed as if the question were here. To, you know, to the, as much as you can, you know, without having someone to follow up.
What we would have to do is prioritise the public that actually do come to the meeting with their questions first, and then if there's time, if there are any emailed questions, then we would try to put them in. But we would add a priority to people that actually come first. Okay, so just on those first two points.
They are advantageous if we knew prior to the meeting what the question was, because somebody comes with a question and is out. A month to think about it, get all these arguments, it gives it to us, we've got half an hour to think of an answer and a lot of time to think of it. So it would be a lot better for you if we have prior knowledge of the questions.
Yeah, that'd be nice and perfect, but we can't insist on it. So if there's nothing on those two points, then obviously we'll come to the second point, which is to allow strangers to, because we can't be specific to say Anston, I think you said.
Yeah, actually, I should have said neighbour in parish.
It should just be strangers, really.
But I mean, calling people strangers when they live in Anston, it's, I know it's just a term that we use. Yeah, but it seems a bit daft in this day and age, because, you know, we're two communities. Well, we're probably three with Lawton Common and you could drive from Lawton Common to South Anston and, you know, if you didn't know the area, you'd think you'd really just stayed in the same small town. Because we're joined at the hip, you know, you can't tell me what happens in Dinnington doesn't affect people in Anston and vice versa. So I think it's quite archaic that I can't go and ask a question at Anston Parish and Anston people can't come and ask a question here, so long as it's sensible and it relates to Dinnington.
And I'd love to talk to the floor, think, Camilla Smith?
I agree, I can't for life to me understand, but we have a rule that says we're in a three mile radius where we live. I can go and stand as a councillor, we have councillors, we have people from Dinnington, our councillors in Anston, we have people from Woodsheds, the councillors on Dinnington. So we have a rule that says, we're in a three mile radius, we can go and stand in any of them. We can actually stand in a mall if we want, but we can actually stand as a candidate in any of them. And yet, they can't come here and ask a question in our council. We can't go to Anston or any of those and ask a question there. And I just can't see that you can have a rule that says you can stand there and be a councillor in their areas and that you can actually, we can have people, strangers, what do you call it? We can have strangers on this council who can speak about what happens in Dinnington and make decisions about Dinnington. And yet, we can't go to Woodsheds or to Anston or whatever and ask a question. I find it ridiculous.
The comments on that?
Without this reunion, I think it works okay. I'd like to stop it, please. Can you speak up to it? I'd like to, I propose to be stopped as it is.
Well, there's no motion, there's no motion anyway, it's just for discussion.
Could you speak up, please?
I'll reiterate the information. Right, okay, basically what councillor Davies was saying is that some time ago, in the past, before I was here on, we were finding that the time was getting taken up by Anston residents asking questions and actually parishioners from Dinnington weren't getting any time to ask questions. I'm not, I'm only interrating, but councillor's there to approve that.
Just a minute.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I don't agree with that, actually. People that did come from Anston asked very obvious points connected with Dinnington. They were asking questions about Dinnington, even though they lived in Anston. They didn't actually at the time, and I was here at some of the meetings when those people came, they did not take up the time that was allowed for Dinnington residents. That is not fair to say that.
Excuse me, chairman, but people from Anston, and I'm from Anston, so I'm probably speaking out of turn. But this is our local town, this is our local town.
Unfortunately, this is, and it's not been decided, and terms that have been changed. So as much as we're discussing this, unfortunately, it's just such that that you can't take part in this meeting.
No, I understand, but I make the point, it is our local town.
Is there anyone else that wants to come in on this discussion? No, okay, that's as much discussion as we've got on that item and the other two items that we brought up at the same time.
Okay, thanks.
Right, well, there is no more questions being posed to us by the public. So I will now formally close the public session and move on to full council. Just to remind everyone that if you do wish to take part in it, you indicate and members may allow you to speak if it pertains. Right, if I move on to first item, which is, I've just got to check through this, we've changed the numbering system slightly. If you haven't noticed, the numbers have changed. It's now to conform with the agenda and minutes to align together. So first one is apologies of absence.
May I ask, Mr. Chair, can you tell me why, what reason you've got for that? I'm too busy.
I've only received notification that they apologise that I'm coming.
Can I just point out, we take it to the board.
Okay.
Can I just point out, we take it to the board. If you, the letter that you get as a councillor and it says you are summoned to attend a meeting. If you're looking at your dictionary, if you look at the word summon, it means you're instructed to attend. It's not an invitation, it's an instruction, it's a legal instruction to attend a meeting. Now, the National Association of Lumber Councillors actually said that this meeting takes priority over any others. It actually takes priority over a governor's meeting, if you should be here, not at a governor's meeting, this takes priority. This is where it's supposed to be, the legal aid of councillor, parish councillor and councillor. So they're summoned to attend, so they should attend. And can I point out that councillor Philip Ward hasn't attended a meeting since July? Now, that means that if we forget August, he's not attended again to the, the afternoon apologies. So if he doesn't attend February's meeting, that's six meetings. So the clerk would write to him, advise him that that's his last chance and that from February, if he doesn't attend February's meeting, from then on, he's no longer to attend council. That's the rules, that's the law, that's our extent. And what it should do is, it should be limited on the reasons why councillors aren't attending this meeting.
Right, take on board what you say with that and don't tell me about the turning process. That is in hand and we know exactly how we are with that. So if there are...
Well, I should, well, I shouldn't, but I know that, you never mentioned any of it.
That there's only councils to the same county, so it's not...
I've always understood, people who apologise, if there's not a reason, the council has to accept. I would say the council has to accept.
Well, we'll look more into this and I'll get...
Exactly right, yeah, councillor, because that's the exact point. The ball we're getting is, is that we've got apologies. We're not getting reasons, so what we're saying is that we're going to ask to vote now on accepting apologies, whether they're not apologies or they are, it's somebody saying, oh, I'm sorry. Well, that would make it, so as far as I'm concerned, we should vote against the accepting and not accepting apologies.
You mentioned someone's made there, there's two other councillors, why have you mentioned? I don't think any of you really mentioned, why have you all been there? Is other councillors something that you've been talking about for as long?
So then, shall I...
This is not giving us board, the principle is stated, I believe, probably correct, but I'll have to find out. We will look into it further. The principle I'm saying is that it prioritises everything else, that I can look at. But I do agree with you that when apologies are put in, the reason for the apologies should be there. Okay, so we have those apologies, there are unattended ones, which we haven't received any apologies. So I think I've learned something now. Do we have to take a vote to accept the apologies?
Can I, can I report to accept councillor Falwes' apology?
And councillor Jepson. Yeah, councillor Jepson has emailed that he isn't able to attend, but has given a reason. As I said, there are some that haven't attended and we haven't taken them, received any apologies. So is proposal to accept councillor Falwes?
Can I, can I propose an amendment? I have proposed that we don't accept any of the apologies, because nobody is apologising properly for not getting proper reasons. And councillor Falwes is a reason for not coming, is not an acceptable reason for not coming to this council meeting.
Well, before I take the amendment, I need to see if there's a second or a proposal to accept councillor Falwes. Take it, okay, with the amendment by councillor Smith, anyone seconding the amendment? That we don't accept. All right, well, without a second, we move to the first motion, which is to show lands to accept councillor Falwes' apologies. If I may move on to the next item, which is to consider any matters determined by the chair. I have two items, which we'll put into... So into 11B, change the meeting dates, I'll go into more when we get to it. And 11C is renewal of investments, again, I'll go into more when we get to it.
Mr. Chair, we were saying before, which is the business report. And in effect, Dinnington, so surely, the, any objections to it have to be by 28th of this month. So surely it should be discussed with this meeting, it should be early to discuss with this meeting, which Anston's, Anston's, actually, yeah, it should be before on the bottom of the business report, which was sent through, which was, Mr. Falwes' growth plan. And to effect, Dinnington is several weeks. So, you know, as far as I'm concerned, I don't think it should, the objections have to be in for 28th. We won't have a meeting before, and I'm not prepared to send that by email.
Quite enough to bring it in on an urgent item, but it's 11D mentioned. Okay, next item is to consider any matters which should be dealt with in open or confidential session. You've got the items there, does anybody feel that any items should be dealt with in confidential session? No. Okay, move on to five, which is to confirm minutes of the meeting and councillor Hall lives this time. If we have the meeting minutes there, just to remind everyone, these aren't for discussion, these are only for approval. I do have one piece of information from councillor Jepson. It was noted that he seconded moving the minutes of the previous meeting and he actually says that it was in the second today. So if we don't have anyone here that remembers that they did, it's a mistake on the minutes for it. We will actually go over the audio information to actually confirm it, but we didn't receive this until today. We haven't had time to, so if no one is, then we'll go over the audio and the minutes minutes. We've got your proposal. Well, I think it is, but I'm, we'll go to the audio, we'll check it. Okay, so if we can go to the minutes, page one.
Has he been replied from Kevin Hammond as far as the election?
Well, the last, as I say, this is for discussion. Yeah, as yet. Page one, page two. I actually did email all members, which I'm sure you were wrong at the time when I did email this. So members, I've had my feelings about that meeting. But again, I don't want to discuss it while we're in the minutes. Do you want to just recap on one and two? Page three. Page four. Page five. Page six. Page seven. Somebody, who knows the truth, I call? Item six is to record any declarations of interest. Any declarations? Point seven is to consider any matters raised in the public session. Moving on past eight, as we've explained. Nine is responding, so page three. Right, so if we can go to the, can I keep it to the chair, please? If we go to the first item, which is simple story by rear extension to 167 St Silver Road. We have the information there, as of this afternoon, we have, there have been no objections on the website. Does anyone have any comments on that item? No objections. Second item is use of land to extend it down at the rear of 44 Parklands Avenue, Dinnington. As of today, there have been three objections online. I'm not going to go through them all. But they are there, if you're able to see if you wish. And the person that's actually put in for the application has sent some support information over the top of the actual application, if you've got anything you wish to see, there's a lot of it, which I've got here, and I can just go over a few points. There is a letter from the police with a crime management number stating that they have intended and to support things that have been stated in the application. There are various other things, where there are no objections from local wildlife panel, and there's a part about how the council have been and seen some of the things that have been said again in the application. I'm not trying to gloss over it too much, but there is an awful lot there, the council want to see it. So, I've got all the information there, so it's your thoughts on what would be your answer?
Looking to the, actually, I explained, I reckon that this will really relate the crime situation. I have taken a much, much longer pause, for the, the subject, actually, so I mean, by checking that place of land, is that supposed to give that problem?
I think that's, yeah, well, that's, that's not supported the actual way. I would imagine, yeah, the way it's put is, it's not available for anyone to be on it.
Could you speak up, please?
Yeah, I can reiterate again. Well, the councillor's saying is that it is a concern that it sets a precedent for every other house that borders that piece of land to be able to apply for it as well. I'm sorry. Yes, the, the ladies' details of actual application, oh, sorry, actually, on the land itself, it's, we, we think it's Boris' land. I would imagine that, because the application, the government have had advice. I have some information, yeah, it says in this application that Boris has been out to it and examining the land, so it is their land. Right, that doesn't necessarily mean that they've actually agreed to the sale of the land. Sorry, this is a formal way of having to do this, basically, the lady who made the application is actually in, and will members allow the lady to speak? You've got to be careful that you don't try and influence us necessarily, but if you've got some pertinent information which may answer that question that councillor's just asked, can I ask Shawman to allow the lady to speak? Please speak.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much. I came along tonight to welcome any questions that you have. This has been an ongoing problem for me since early 2012, I've been in regular contact with RMBC about various issues that we have to live with on a daily, daily basis, mainly at the weekends and very late at night. There are four elements to my problems, one is the antisocial behaviour, and to answer your question, Mr. Smith, it's a congregation area, and wanting to manage that area myself and bring it within my boundaries, not to extend my garden, that's not the main primary focus for me at all, is to remove the congregation area. Antisocial behaviour is a problem late at night with older teenage people gathering, drinking, I have found drugs paraphernalia, I have found bags with white powder remnants left in, broken bottles, beer cans chucked into my garden, my little girl woken up, my husband goes out to see them, and of course, that only antagonises the situation, that's one element. The second element is tree maintenance, RMBC have got no one aid for tree maintenance at the back of my house, I've asked and asked Ian Kennedy, who worked in the Woodlands manager before, Kevin Burke, who's now the Woodlands manager, have asked and asked for tree maintenance, there's no provision for tree maintenance. I'm happy to do it myself, but obviously, I want it to be under my management and control for tree maintenance at the back of the house. Flooding issues is the third element, my garden's a complete bog with puddles standing on it, and again, I've asked if they can put some sort of drainage pipes in to assist us with flood management in the gardens, every year I'm paying to turf it, and then every time winter comes, it's just a mud bath again and again. And the fourth element is dumping, dumping it back, people just in broad daylight going round with a wheelbarrow and just dumping all types of garden and DIY matters, cement, sand, all sorts at the back of my house. So, wanting to take control of that small piece of land that has been deemed with no wildlife, no biogas to value, is something that I've been trying to do since early 2012. I welcome any questions that you've got.
I think one was the whether the formal applications by the law have been made.
Yeah, they did say in principle, before I put in the application, that they didn't have any objections to selling the land.
Would they nor go on any more security, if you're just on the fence of this part of the area?
It's fenced now, and it will be fenced in exactly the same way, so in terms of security, I don't have a security problem, my fence is quite high, but again, it's just removing that congregation area, so removing the playground, this is the problem that we knew that we might have when we bought a house on a general, and I'm sure that anybody that's ever lived on a general will have had the same sort of problems, but we didn't realise the extent of the variety of problems, it's not just the antisocial behaviour, it's all the other things that I've explained. We can't put our bottles out the night before anymore because it gets kicked over, such a frightening noise in the middle of the night to hear a big blue box being kicked over to snatch bottles, and we have to get up early and clean it up, so it's, it's just trying to manage the problem.
But this very specific point with the actual land won't solve that problem?
Again, I believe that taking, taking away that congregation area will then remove that, that routine that they've got to congregate there.
Right. Will it turn among these noises on to your next door neighbour? Is this, are they congregating at the back of your next door neighbours, that piece of land at the back of your next door neighbour?
No, because that, that piece of land next to me, it's very dense woodland, it's not clear like mine is, mine is just mud.
Yeah, so that's, next door's is more open, so it won't stop that, do you know how their land next door to you?
No, that's very dense woodland, you wouldn't be able...
You wouldn't be able to?
No, not at all, it's all bushy and tall trees, they've got a lot more woodland on there, they're going up towards the woods then, it's very heavy, dense, dense woodland and bushes, so that wouldn't provide any sort of congregating land, and on the other side, there's no, there's no area for them to congregate there either.
So, it's basically just your corner?
Unfortunately, and because I'm on a general as well, it, it seems like an obvious place for them to hang around, but like I say, it's only one element of the problems, the others three are equally problematic. I don't think it would cause anybody any inconvenience, the questions about setting a precedent, well, I believe that you would look at every application in its own merits anyway, so.
Well, it's not that simple, once a precedent's been set, every resident will then say, well, she's got it, so you buy, you can complain, that, that's where we've got to really look carefully, I think, is, is the precedent that's...
But if they, if they've been having the same sort of problems that I've provided evidence with for the last three years, then again, they would have a case to put forward to you.
Right, okay.
I think if it sets a precedent, if it does what you expect it to, you want it to, I would say that it'd be a good thing if rest of the neighbours did exactly what you wanted to do, because that way, then, it stops any access for these people, so it'd be, it'd be good to set a precedent and allow everybody else on it to do exactly the same thing.
The tree maintenance...
That's going to, that's going to help you, and it's also going to help your neighbours, so, yeah, I just think if you look at it...
Thank you. The tree maintenance as well, I think would help the council in a lot of respects because they do get a lot of complaints for that area, because they don't have the funding for it, and some people just chop the tops off the trees, well, it's not a very aesthetically pleasing way or very good to manage a tree like that, to prune a tree in that way.
What we may have to take into consideration, though, is our objections to building on green belt, although this isn't specifically green belt, but it is parkland, and really, this map doesn't show it that well, but I actually did, with respect to you, I wanted to actually see what the issue was, and I actually went this weekend, perhaps I have a look, I don't know if any of the members actually did. That is a massive piece of land that borders the back gardens from the top round down to the very bottom where the little river is, I think it goes all the way down there, doesn't it? That would be a massive piece of parkland that we're rooted to back gardens, so, I'm not going to suggest, because it's not my place to suggest, but I'm just given motivation that I actually went and had a look, and it's trees all along the path on both sides.
But you're limit how much, I mean, you're limit how much people are allowed to act on it, but this is not a small extension to a garden, so surely, you could say, well, if that, if the precedence, precedence has been set of that amount of land, that this one particular hill, the natural boundary, the path would be probably the natural boundary.
It doesn't have to. It doesn't have to, but I think for what I've said, but again, it's, it's parkland, but we are looking to...
And you can imagine, in the summer, in the summer, we have no sun at all on the back, none whatsoever, which is quite impressive when the sun's out, we get to see it so rarely that when it is out, it doesn't come into my garden because of the very high trees.
Well, you've got all the information that I had to give you extra, so it's down to, yeah? Well, I'm not, it's basically members of the public that have gone on the, on my portal and raised objections, I'm not going to go more into that. So, it's for you to decide if you wish to do on this one. No objections?
Could you speak up, please, would you mind?
Yeah, I'll reiterate again, basically, what I think you're saying, I'm sure you're saying is the, the area is parkland.
We're allowing, you've been allowed to, to apply and vote for it, I'm allowed to vote, you're objecting to this.
Have we moved to the subject? The, I've not seen anyone who wishes to raise any objections. You wish to object to this item?
There's no parkland on my piece of land, I can't speak on behalf of all the other pieces of land in that area, but on mine, there's nothing, it's just mud and dogmuck and rubbish. I will plant trees, I will plant sugar eggs, I will maintain that area of, of trees.
Yeah, no, it's, it's just the term, it's called parkland, as opposed to road or path or, and I've been seeing it, it is parkland.
Thank you for allowing me to speak, ladies and gentlemen.
So, we've just had a moment, objects, do we have, so there's an important objection in? So, we'll just leave as is? Okay, third item is a single story side rear extension to sixty nine Stilwell, you have the application there, you have the maths, do you wish to discuss it, do you wish to raise any objections? No comments? So, according to the planning, it's for the hit roof, game roof, on three story side and rear, and single story rear extension and formation of roofs in loose places, sixty four, it's an avenue, someone has a big job on the description, you've got the information again there? Does anyone have any comments or wish to object in any way? Again, I did do a little bit, go around there, I was looking at the plan, where it is, it is a substantial extension, but it looks like it would keep in, fit in the area. No, it's, it's a domestic home, it's, it's just a drive, they use a bit of their own land. Somebody go and ask Simon to come back, please?
Excuse me, do you think we could turn the heaters off if it's not going to be too cold? Because we might be able to hear you a bit better if you did that.
Good move to item ten, which is for concessions and donations, we've had one inquiry from Jepson, Berdins, in relation to a charity event, it's a fundraiser for an expedition to Lesotho for sort of their students, and asking for a booking concession to use the local theatre on the twenty eighth of February. Do, does anyone have any comments on that?
Could you speak up, I'm sorry, we can't hear you.
Yeah, basically, what they're saying is that we have precedent where we've allowed schools to use this for charitable events and fundraising, and I think your proposal was to give the concession. Second to that, councillor Twing, any other comments? Shawman, just call the concession, please. All right, if we get on to eleven A, it's to consider appropriate action in respect for requests on works of against consideration actions.
Mr. Chair, if you'd all, can I just say, I'm going to make the decision on this to know that they're asking, because I'm just conscious that...
What I can see here is that they're asking for a letter of support.
I've put everything well together, because I think it's likely to the planning board for a consultation.
I've got the place there.
Yeah, so, yeah, probably.
It may be that a joint, yeah, I'm not a partner, but I think that's pretty much what they're trying to say. Yeah, I think what they're saying is, I mean, obviously, the decision is going to be in their area of planning, they're trying to build up a well of support, and they're obviously looking at us as being bored, and I think what they're saying is, what they're asking for is a letter of support from us with their campaign.
Because I worked with this, I've seen this business, there are, there is in the same place, but actually been on fire twice, nearly been bad fires, and I think that's probably where this is coming from. So, for the rest, they helped us to keep in that order, I think it's quite substantial. The last fire actually caused smoke throughout work, but for actually that two weeks.
Just, I'll go in a second line. Just, if you know exactly where it is, because I was trying to work it out, is it where the glass factory used to be? Yeah.
Oh, relax.
Next to it, isn't it? Where the refrigerators are.
Waste, waste is, everybody's got problems with waste. It's a thing, it can't be ignored. But this is going to crop up everywhere this, there's going to be these waste plants, all want to get this waste. So, this is, I can't see this comes into our daily work, as in, didn't it?
Well, I think, I think it's probably because we've got smoke from the last one.
Well, we, we gave rid of waste now down the safety claim, so everybody's got problems with waste, in every way. So, we could have gone to worksop there, we could have gone to worksop and applied to them, because we gave rid of waste.
But they've not really got to regret what we've been saying at that time.
Can I, Mr. Smith?
Well, what they're concerned about, fighting, what they're concerned about is the conditions. And if you look at what, Andy Sheffield, our relations with Sheffield, that the flats, Bernard Road incinerator, which is the same type, I think this is, if you remember, briefly it's planned the changes and what have you there. What they proved in Sheffield is that Bernard Road incinerator actually is for just carcinogens. These affect people in the flats, if expect, and it travels for miles. What they're actually saying is, is the way, the way it is, and you turn, you turn the wind blowing in the right direction, then it starts digging to this, this area, cops, no, the science for these things is not very good. And it's, what they're trying to do, they're actually trying to save money on landfill. But what they're doing is, they're actually exacerbating situation because they burn it, and then that means then we're getting, we're getting fallout from it, which makes it even worse, which is worse than landfill. But that's what they're trying to do, is about saving money. And the problem again is, well, it's a private company that is, is going to be running it, and it's run for profit. And we all know what kind of problem is that going to cause. So I agree with it, I don't think that it should be a problem, I think it can be a problem as far as dignity is concerned, and as far as process, and that area is concerned, it is about fallout from it, it's not about getting on fire. You understand, you understand why you're going to do that, without these sites, exactly, it's about these sites actually. And I thought that would be very good on there, on it as well.
Yeah, if you don't build into worksop, couldn't it be, are we good talk, yeah? Yeah, absolutely, absolutely, always a good way to buy, it's like, as the commission said. I've got an indication from members of the public that wishes to put forward some further information on this. My town members, agreement for Mr. Porter to speak on this subject?
Thank you, chairman. I don't know whether the town council are aware, but there are four members, four people in this room who are actually part of the liaison committee at Traderly on the industrial estate in Dillington. There's been a lot of concern about that site and its pollution to this area. My only concern is if we object to something on the worksop, then is the company responsible for this going to try and build in Dillington? We've got enough pollution in Dillington, and we should not be having any more. I just want to make the council aware that, you know, this is a possibility. And, you know, should you be supporting something which is likely to come to this area?
Even if it's built in worksop, it's still polluted, it's only five miles away.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Even if it's built in worksop, it's still, it gets pollution, it's only five miles away.
No, that's not the point, the point is, the point is.
No, but it comes, it's still the nature, we should be objecting to wherever.
The point being made is, is that if we don't support it, and we don't object to it, then we're actually supporting building incinerators, the incineration that can come to Dillington. So, you know, if we don't, if we're not supporting these, then the principle of these, that we support incinerators.
Well, just, just to recap.
What I said before, what is in the argument, it sounds like it would be, it would be pointless just us supporting these, you know, not objecting to this, and if it came here, we would go to the same, so I think we should object.
Well, it's not an objection, I suppose. We really don't have any influence on planning or making decisions. We're just trying, they just want some weight to try and show them the level of objection, not just in that area. Do you have any other? Any other comments against that one? With respect to vote that we send a letter of support to this firm? It's, I think it's an individual group, isn't it?
Yeah, it is, yeah.
Yeah, okay, so those in favour of sending a letter of support? If we can then move on to the items that were discussed. Item B. Oh, yeah. Thank you, Les. Right, if we can move on to eleven B, which is being an item urgent. Change of meeting dates for April, May and June. Basically, as we have already discussed, looking major roofwork for the local, of which April, May and June look like the times where this hall won't be able to be used for anything because it'll essentially be a building site. We've looked into other meeting venues for those three months. And the only thing that we can come up with is the Middleton Institute. Unfortunately, they've got regular bookings on Monday. So what we're looking for is your permission, if it's possible, that we move April, May and June's meetings to the second Tuesdays in the month. Does that cause problems with anyone? Yeah, it's, I mean, basically we're looking, the dates of the proposals to change are April the fourteenth, May the twelfth, and June the ninth. If we can't agree, we could take these dates, we'd really have a problem because we don't have a venue to go to. So can we just have your input? If we have a reason to park in, which was? One answer, just while we're throwing in ideas, I'd forgotten, Davis Corp. Which by Davis Corp, then we have used Davis Corp for meetings before. So rather than make a decision now, if anyone can also make any suggestions, we have tried, hopefully Middleton Institute for Mondays, if we can't, and the resource centre is used at that time as well. If you do think of any others in the next week or so, anything suggested? But we're okay for Tuesday, Middleton, if you need. Well, let's pull some other ones and come back. In February? Okay, so the next item, scene, steam, virgin, is new investments. It's required that we make a decision before the third of the January, because that's when the current investment matures, it's with the co-op at the moment. What we recommend is by the accountant, bear in mind that we will need quite a substantial amount of that investment for doing the roof, that we reinvest it or let it roll on in its current state for three months, in which case it's still in a safe place, but it will then be available for when we do the initial roof repairs. Well, it's a valid point. Okay, it's the, I mean, the reason, I believe that we used co-op was on ethical reasons for investment. Well, there's the recommendations there, is there for you to discuss and do what you need, but we do need a decision today.
Well, a new decision today, I'm going to say, can't the accountant look into it?
Maybe he has to look into it, that's a recommendation.
He recommended leaving it in court?
Well, yes, because it's easy to leave if we don't have to start setting a new account, knowing that we're going to be using it in a few months' time anyway, for the roof repairs.
But it will take about eighteen months to sell, how secure it was in the court, weren't you? So, let's go to the primary.
It's only saying three months.
It's only saying three months.
But we're not renewing all the investments, are we?
Yeah, but then you change, then you decide what you're going to do with it. In three months' time, we then decide whether you seek ethical matters of investment, or whether you go for paying interest rates or. Do you think that we accept the recommendation? Can we have a short answer, that's what we do? Right, thank you. Item D, I'm going to put go to councillor Smith because he's got relevant information which I don't know.
Well, it's the, it's a Rotherham growth plan. It's basically, it's Rotherham plans for the economy for Rotherham. It affects Dillington in quite a few ways. However, we're all close to it, and I think the idea looks to be an absolute kind of a luncheon age, we enjoy it. Because the one thing they're saying, the whole, the whole theme through it, and this is the most worrying part about it, is that they're saying, the main thing is the building of the industrial estate along the A fifty-seven, which means they're talking about building an industrial estate on Greenbelt. And that's the, the whole way through it is the main thing about it. Now, they, they also go on, they say that, can I find it? Well, they're saying that, that our industrial estates, basically, they're saying that they fall. They're saying that the one that's built on Pitt, where Pitt, where it's sold, that that's full, and the two-thirds of the, of the other one, the others, are full, and that at least they're getting former by the minute. Now, I, I think that I looked at it, and when you go around, there are twenty-two units that are empty, most of them are large units, not small units, so we've got twenty-two units around that area. There's a big area where they built, they put the footings in for another big unit, so we've got that. There's also fifty-two acres of land for sale for industrial use. We've got an area where they've got roads, lighting and everything put in. So why, I can't understand why they want to, again, start licking our Greenbelt. Because, I mean, if you look at, if you look at enterprise zones, they're just a quick fix solution, they don't actually work. They, I mean, they create jobs for a while, because they prove what's happened out of industrial estates in Dillington. But what happens is that companies come in, and they actually stay, they stay till all the benefits are finished, and then they take off to another enterprise zone. So what's going to happen as far as safety disembark is concerned, if they're going to build over there, they're going to check, they're going to check the Greenbelt, companies will move in because they'll get tax breaks, they'll get, they'll get business breaks, they'll get free rent. So they'll come in, they'll move in, move from another area, and they'll move into our area. And then when they're tired up after about two or three years, off they'll go, and we're left then. We're empty units and no Greenbelt. So as far as Anderson, which might of course is that we object strongly to the fact that we don't want them building an industrial estate, but they should go, they should have a look at the existing industrial areas that we've got, the industrial landers for sale, and look at that before they go anywhere near A fifty-seven in Greenbelt. But that, this, this whole group, this whole business is based, it says it's going to create ten thousand jobs. There's no way that, you know, when you go into it and you start to look into it properly, and look into what the proposals are, there's no way that they're going to create ten thousand jobs. But again, what they're, what they're wanting to do is, Dillington's going to get, again, it's coming and licking our Greenbelt, and it's, and it won't work, that on A fifty-seven. And they're saying the reason they want to do that is, is because it's cheap, that's big, that's what they say. It's a low cost way of doing it. Yeah, of course it is, because they can put straight into version, Greenbelt, and just blow it up and build on it.
Just, go over what you've got there. I think we're still disagreeing with building all Greenbelt, no matter where it is, but I think that particular plot that Sir Councillor Smith's talking about is not Dillington Greenbelt.
Putting effects, the point of the business, which he said, major priority project, priority project. Major challenge work, an excellent locator site with minimal investment requirements. Why should we, you know, why, if they want to create jobs, they're talking, what they're actually saying is that they want to create jobs for our area. Now, if you want to create jobs for our area, want to create jobs for Dillington, and nobody's been able to prove the star many jobs have been created by, whether they're not on Pitts Island and the rest of it, because, you know, if you look at it, and I'll pass forward, there's a mass exit site at Dillington. They're all off, they're all flying off the rest of it, to go back to Rotherham, to go back to Sheffield, to go back to Doncaster. They're all off, they're all flying off the rest of it to go back to Rotherham, to go back to Sheffield, to go back to Doncaster. If they want to create jobs, they're okay, let them go and, let them go and build on the sites that we've got. Let them buy the land that's free, that's hanging around in Diddington, and let them create jobs for Diddington. They'll be short term, but let them create jobs for Diddington.
Just to go over with that, I appreciate how well you're doing. Just to see confirmation from the plaque book, when we objected, I'm sure we cited, the fact that our industrial land was not being used adequately. So pretty much what you're saying there, um, we, we really can't, well, we can say again, but we haven't said it. And Sue Bostrom has said that the fact that if that was built in the area, it would not only not encourage any growth within our area, it would actually drag companies away from what we already have. Uh, and we didn't, that is enlightening, we've actually done that. I was just wondering, which we can do again if members.
Well, what I'm, what I'm saying is, is that I know the objection that goes in like twenty-eight for this month, and that's what I understand. And as far as I'm concerned, I don't think that, uh, taking, taking that Greenbell and building it in industrial estate, what I'm thinking industrial estate should be taken off from all places, which will lead to. So as you, as the chairman quite rightly says, that what can happen is, you build, you build on A57, and companies move from areas that we've got in Diddington and go to there. And because they're going to get, because they're going to get a rate.
Plus nothing for relocation from there, there will be, there will be nothing.
Yes, but it, but it earns a lot of money because of the kind of rates that they get. Because that is, we're not class, the thing for Diddington is as well, is that we're not peripheral. And what, uh, and what they're saying is the, uh, enterprise zone. So we're not banging to enterprise zone, but, uh, Tonic, if you say with that part of it, drops into enterprise zone. So that, we're an enterprise zone, that's where our money comes from, the rate, the taxes, the rents, the business.
Just need to bring in, I'll give you a second, other that's been trying to get in. Uh, may I have members' permission that, um, Jepson speaks on this specific point?
Thank you, thank you, Chair. I'm waiting for your hands.
Will you voice last?
Well, now I don't think so, apologies for the state of the voice. Perhaps I should be on that, I will certainly. Can I just reiterate what councillor Smith said, seems to be going in there? That this is now classed as Toddwick North, um, which, as you're aware, Diddington, Aniston, Toddwick and every other council around here has objected to under the LDP. So you have put your objections into it already, because I've seen the clerk's, um, comments that he put. As far as I can see, David's right, the amount of land that's got industrial settings out for it already in Diddington should be used first, I didn't know if you knew that. But my, my concern is that, uh, this has been used as an industrial land for Sheffield rather than where else it's to Sheffield. Satisfy the industrial portion, as I said, the city growth region. And a lot of the areas that they're looking at are in Rotherham, particularly the southern part. And I don't think we, we bear any relationship to Sheffield as such. The thing is, um, I think it's a overspill for waving because that's going to be nearly full up in the next year or so. And I think this is the next step, and, and what they've quoted, as councillor Smith says, is the fact that we've got a nice little roundabout, a stretcher over the A57 makes it, uh, going to all the planning offices, ticks every box as well, it might be for planning offices in Rotherham, but I don't think it does for the general population out here. I don't think it's something that we would want, it's Greenbell, we're going to lose a lot of things. It's only going to make traffic and road conditions even worse. I think there's a lot of industrial area in Diddington that's been here with that. But this has slipped in under the radar after the last consultation, because you and that councillor, Cailver and councillor Russell and councillor David, this wasn't even mentioned at that, the hearings last, not last year, year before, in 2013. This was proposed by, I think, Allen Land Management for fifteen hundred houses in a school. And the inspector turned that down all of a sudden in the next consultation on LDP. We've got Toddwick North, which is a massive industrial development on that area of Greenbell. And as far as I can understand, people told me that more or less the, the landowners agreed to settle. And I think it was one of the, such like as Answeth Estates that had done wave. There'll be the people that are going in there to try and build it. So I would not urge that you stick by the principles that you've already adopted, which is objected that. I know the residents of Toddwick, and I'm looking at one person now, have objected to this. The parish council vehemently against it, uh, and we were at Aniston as well, because I don't think it could be very, very fit.
If I may move to longer, because the technical point is, well, a couple of people have been indicating they wish to speak.
Can I just propose that we actually, then the objection of the same, at the same time, stronger, and just reiterate what we've already said, just because it's so close to the date.
We've always seconded, exactly, the proposal's already been made.
Oh, I'm sorry, I, well, I seconded the proposal, sorry.
It's okay. We'll move on to that, but, um, Sander wishes to make a pertinent point on this. Councillors, have any objections? Well, can I have a short answer to allow him to speak on this?
Uh, just forgetting the Toddwick site for a minute. If you look at the original plans, we're, I think we're roughly something like eight percent of the borough, if you add.
This is only about growth regeneration.
Yeah, yeah, but, 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 yeah, specifically industrial side, because the core strategy deals with industrial land as well. So, I mean, in terms of population, Diddington, Aniston, Lowton Common were something like eight percent of the borough. But we were already down to get something like eighteen percent of the borough's new industrial land. And if you look at the supporting documents with the core strategy, they were already saying, and this is before Toddwick North, that that was going to lead to an increase of something like twenty-five percent in traffic levels, which, you know, compared to an increase of something like eight percent nationally. So you can imagine what kind of, uh, impact that's going to have. They said in the document that in some cases locally, journey times could easily be doubled. And, and like I said, that's, that's not even considering Toddwick North. Now, if you put Toddwick North in as well, the reason it's been included, it's, uh, all driven by the Sheffield city region, basically. Because what they're looking for is lots, is vast, flat tracts of land that's relatively inexpensive. And Rotherham's quite rich in those, as opposed to Sheffield or the other areas. And this is earmarked for, uh, like a massive lorry depot, basically. That's what they wanted to build there. So you're talking about, uh, and this is all in their documentation, if you want to read it. But what you're essentially talking about is a comparatively few number of jobs for the amount of land that you've got to give up. The jobs are of, with all due respect, comparatively low paid, comparatively low quality. And there's no guarantee whatsoever that they're going to go to, uh, local people. So we were already in a bit of a fix before the, the plans at Toddwick. You know, we were already getting twice our fair share of the industrial land. And a twenty-five percent increase in traffic, you know, quite what, what the Toddwick plans will do to that might stick another five or ten percent on top of that. You know, we're, we're going to be ruining the standard of life that people enjoy at the moment.
Can I, I'm going to wrap it up, but, um, I don't know the other items. I think you indicated most.
I think what I want to say, what I see, you might, the whole thing, the whole theme through this is about the Sheffield partnership. And I think, so what you, what you're saying, uh, is right, in the, what, what we're going to get is, and it says it's because, Tonic, the reason they want to go for that is because it's, uh, it's close to M1. And that's basically the, the main reason for it. So what we're going to get is we're going to get where it's going to be from this, basically Sheffield originally, they're going to come on to, on to there. And so what we're going to get is we're going to get all this mass exodus we get coming down Toddwick Road to get onto A57, to get out to Diddington. And then we're going to have them coming from this industrial estate on A57, trying to get back to Sheffield. So we've, we've had a chunk of it built, and we're just going to get a massive block, and we're going to get a couple. And our, uh, vehicle in Diddington won't get the jobs that these are trying to make out that they will get. Because what it says, what it also says is that what we've got in, in our area is a propensity of low skilled workers. And so what we're wanting to attract is high level, high skilled, uh, businesses. So, you know, it's a juxtaposition of workers.
Well, in, in the documents, David actually says, uh, there's a lot of low skilled labour in Rotherham. So what they want is as much low skilled jobs as they can possibly get, which I, I think is just appalling. It completely ignores the fact that achievements going up in our schools, every single year, we've got kids leaving with A levels coming out their ears. You know, and thi- this is the plan for the next ten or fifteen years. You know, we should be, be a little bit more ambitious.
Where we are with the proposal, because again, I'm aware of time. Your proposal, we object to the front plan.
Not to the, no, let me, let us get me right in. I agree, I agree that Rotherham council and us and all resident councils, I agree that we need to get out there and try to create, or try to find companies and try and create jobs. We need to get, that's what we need to do, we need to boost our economy, I don't have a problem with that. I don't have a problem with our council getting involved in that, I think that we should, I think we should get even more involved in it. I'd like to see that we, the unemployment rates in our area, which are higher than most others, come well down, I would like to see that our kids can leave school and think that they've got a place to go and get a job. But what I object to is the fact that they want to take a massive sway around Greenbell in order to, uh, fail to achieve that. They won't achieve it by taking that Greenbell, taking that on A57. We've got plenty of land in Diddington, we've got plenty of units in Diddington, and that's where it should be done. Leave that Greenbell alone, dig around off it, that's what I'm against, I'm against the Tonic or the, that's what I think.
Is that what you're saying? Right. And what we do is, again, make reference to the fact that the objection to building on that particular area, and our worry that it will take business away from our existing. What I'll propose we do with the proposal, once we've had a vote, if, if we are in agreement with it, is Quark drafts up a response, bear in mind the data that we need to achieve, and he emails it out to all members. And I would ask you all to email back any comments that you have on it, when you're in agreement to it or not.
Also, put in, put in as well, this council is totally against building anything on Greenbell. That's what we said, that is, that is what we stand for.
Yeah.
So that's it.
Okay, but last comment before I go to the, uh.
Just one quick comment, yeah, I think what, what we've got there is a, is a two-pronged assault on the Greenbell out here. We've got the LDP and all of that concerns, and Toddwick North is in that, and we've all objected to it. But again, they're trying to move the local growth plan, so if you object to one, you don't object to the other, it weakens your case for that going ahead. So I think people have got to, um, you know, keep up the same opinions and, and don't deviate from them and don't not comment, because if this slips through the net, then they'll take it that you're only interested in one, but not the other. So I think it's a, as I say, we've, we've got it on two counts now that they're trying to, to do it in this area. And I think we should, you know, we should reiterate what we were talking before.
Move to the vote, if that's okay. So the proposal is that we object to building our industrial units on Greenbell, it's on. And as I suggested, Quark will email, and I'll know members, please respond back. Closing date is, it's ready to, I'll, I'll email. We'll get that done this week. And if we can wrap it up by the end of this week.
Chair, Chair, sorry, can I just, can I just ask the clerk to make it sure that we're against, or the town cast against any form of employment building there? Because it's no good just saying industrial units, it could be anything, it could be employment that's going there. So it could be office law, it could be anything, really. And so not just industrial units, so anything, any industrial development, not just to say office, you know, any commercial industrial.
So trying to move back to it, because.
Exactly.
Uh, right, okay, I'm going to move now, unless anyone wishes to take a break, we can go straight through. Uh, item twelve, which is Parkham and Cemetery, Lord Theatre, Alottinson Land, uh, there is nothing. So I'll move on to thirteen, which is the monthly account schedule, uh, relative point of date information. I've been emailed as well as given the accounts. If you can go through those, and if there are, if there's anything that possibly needs to discuss.
Chair, a big concern about, uh, gas and electric heat weather. Have we, do we challenge different crews to try and get a red? Have we, have we, do you think that, have we worked a part in this one?
Yeah, it's all part of the overall process. Uh, as far as particularly Empower is concerned, uh, I spoke to them, uh, possibly quite, um, quite a private conversation with them. He promised a free proposal, we'll be right back.
Would you achieve if we, if we bought, uh, both gas and electric, we've got one company, we've got that. So will you get back to us?
Absolutely.
Also, this, uh, this I say limited consultant safety. Is that right, health safety? When was that last that we? What is it actually really bearing on this company for four thousand pounds a year?
Uh, basically, well, really probably, but it basically, uh, does all our risk assessments. As a public building, we have to do these, uh, takes, um, site surveys. Yeah, it's providing the consensus who basically ensures that we can fly, we're all, well, we're not going to say the legislation's somebody's special political in that particular area, he has been to design a whole one. His work is to various operations, an example would be a team, uh, erect a burlough for the, um, for the last major building, providing its graphics, is what you're approaching, staying with the team the whole day. And has done all sorts of risk assessments, and that one certain crisis to make sure that we can fly well down. It's not the important thing, it provides, what it basically provides is, uh, protection for the business of the town council.
And does it yield documentation?
They'll represent us if we can work with the council. So if we go, got for issue, if we had an issue, if we get an issue, the problem doesn't exist. So if anything happened, uh, that where someone got, say, an injury or something, it can sort of have a second implication on the way we're represented from as well. And it gives us that cover, but if we don't, it's advice, it's the town council, I'll protect it.
We just, we just, we just, obviously, okay, insurance company, my, providing we've got this, this is accepted. Health safety.
It's the only question, it's in place by stewards, she was just taking that.
Can you check that too?
Can I just come in this one, Brad? They are like, it's about a year, just under a year now, since we've had this in, put this agreement in place. And it's, she was to come out to us in two weeks' time if you wanted to speak to her, if you have any questions. To review what we've already provided for, so, uh, it's been really helpful, uh, because one at the Christmas festival, we now had to provide a risk assessment for even having a reception from the church down there, which is stepped in and helped as well.
I think we, I think we may get some big, obviously, insurance company, we, uh, we'll let them know.
I think if you remember last year, when we brought some things to the table, we were offered like a gold, silver or platinum package. And we did vote at the time which one members wanted to go with, so it hasn't been, it hasn't been.
Any comments on the details? Just one more point, uh, did we get that rebate of that speed plans, you know, did we get that?
We haven't, we haven't really had the rebate, I think, I lost it before.
Yeah, we got the rebate, and then we got the rebate on the monthly account.
Yes.
And they charged us again for the pounds on that account, they gave us a rebate and charged us again. I think if you look back, Alice, you'll see that.
I'm a laxer, the fellow, I'll check the council, the fellow, all the rebates, wouldn't you, I'll tell you further, checking.
Right.
Well, it's found a home to, it's, what's that, I've been found a home to stay with toilets? Toilets and dryers. Yeah. We had to contract it out. Okay. Could you call that as a one? Yeah.
For the handover fee rather than...
Okay, so no other questions, okay?
One interest we have here is that, is that we've got all these accounts, there's not one thing that's been spent on, uh, Dinnington community. Spent, there are thousands of pounds, and I can't find one thing on here that's spent on anything to do with Dinnington community.
That doesn't usually go through the caps here, it'll go through the plants and, uh, commercialists.
Surely, you know, we don't, we don't do anything, so what do we, what do we do as a council? And as far as the police concerned, we've got a quarter million clearing plan, ninety odd thousand, or seventy odd thousand now, uh, sat down. What do, what do we, as a, as a council, what do we pay out as far as community is concerned? And what do we do at community?
This is, this isn't the point, the discussion of...
No, I'm just waiting for you.
Yeah, and, and valid, and, and, you know, more than welcome to put it in as an item at the next meeting. Specifically for this, it's just to move that these are a true record of the account.
No, it's...
Okay, uh, so, uh, if there are no other questions or comments, can I, for show hands, that, uh, it's a proposal, oh, sorry, can I have a proposal that these are a true record? A second there. Show that. Thank you. Uh, right, if we can move on to item fourteen, which is council's brands, we have had no applications for the brands. Uh, fifteen is general matters, which is the running file. And... Issue two is a powerful cross memorial repair. We were assured that we would have the graphics and everything done before Christmas. And we are unfortunately being let down by the contractor. We are chasing it, and I think we're giving the ultimate, we could own it in the next few weeks. We're going to go somewhere to be approached, to be put along with it. Yeah. But if that one is first to be taken away, we'll do that. Yeah. Okay. Uh, issue... Five is the next one open, which is, uh, firm information, uh, it's a verka, you'll have seen information that's come out to you about, um, our non objection books, there were, um, appeal. Uh, we appealed again, uh, about what's happening, and that's it for the moment. Uh, we did seek advice from all parties, and we obviously asked for councillor's comments before we did the appeal. Uh, and that's it for the moment. And then, the other one, it's the open, is issue ten, which is defibrillators. Uh, we are now in receipt of two of the automatic defibs. Uh, and we are waiting for the security panels to arrive. Christmas and New Year unfortunately got in the way, and the supplier delayed with it. As soon as we've received those security boxes, we've got a contractor to organize to fit them, wire them up, and, um, as you know, the two places that they're going to go. One is outside the Salvation Army Hall, near Leicester Road, and the other one is going to be outside the Letherton Theatre. Uh, does anybody have any questions on any of those items? I'll just take councillors first. No questions? Uh, well, it's a non going thing now, the sponsorship, whenever we have any public events or private events, we do ask them if we can put cookies on to the thing, and it's coming along, it's coming along. Uh, right, okay, I'll just take the one comment from Clyde Jepson, please. Uh, again, it's different items, I've spoken to, so members' permission for him to speak?
Thank you, Chair, just regarding the defibrillators, I'm glad we've finally got there. Uh, can I just suggest that, remember the clerk contacts Emma Scott at, got a gambling service, and just flags up with her...
Context, I'm sorry.
Emma Scott, who came out and did the demonstration for us last year, before you were here, Alistair. Um, she did the demonstration here for us last year. And I think if you contact her and let her know, she'll probably get a bit of publicity and...
She's Emma's one, it's supplied her.
Yes, I'm saying, well, as long as she knows about it, but if you'd say if you get a bit of publicity and they're playing for the speaking, it'll be good, so...
Excuse me.
I know she's trying to flag this up wherever they get them.
Once we're in, we will, um, contract all the relevant newspapers, Guardian, advertiser, wherever we can, to try and emphasize the fact that they are, which are there for the community. Okay. The office, the, the local system, where if you phone nine nine nine, they will direct you to it. Okay, right, so if there are no more comments, then the last item is just to go over dates and time at next meeting. Uh, next full council meeting will be Monday, the ninth of February, at seven PM at the Letherton Theatre. I will now... Oh, yeah. Uh, because it's quite an early, uh, in the month on this one, uh, Clark, it's, uh, any agenda items we wish to put on the meeting, here received by toll duty on twenty ninth of January, to give you time to put them together, to, to get the facts out in due time for the tour, I see. Well, thank you very much for your attendance, and I would now close my...
There's a, uh, blue set page on twenty seven, uh, the public's allowed to attend that if you want to attend it.
Well, that's, that's been advertised, and, uh, I mentioned it. Yeah.